I call this the meeting of the Norfolk Public School Board Business Meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Yes, Bassin?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Rousen?
Here.
Martin?
Present. Okay, thank you. We have the adoption, sorry, item 1.03, adoption of the business agenda. Can I please get a motion to adopt the business agenda for today?
Dr. Martin? I would like to, I appreciate the addition of the adoption of the business agenda. I'd like to ask if we would consider moving it to the reconvene business meeting. And so that the adoption is there, that would then allow us, if there's anything that were to come out of closed executive session that may be added. Typically, the closed executive session is pretty standard in terms of the agenda. And I think, and we have called, ordered, and roll called twice. So maybe if we were to move the adoption of the business agenda to the reconvene business portion of the meeting, then it would allow for us to have any considerations on matters that may come out of closed session rather than having to amend it twice.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Any opposition to that?
I'm going to move for the adoption.
What did he say? I'm sorry.
He said he's going to move for the adoption of it.
Unless there are changes.
Are there any?
Well, if I may, Dr. Martin, I do have changes to the agenda, but I support Mr. Jordan's request to move it. Because I was going to actually state that as of now, I would like to amend it to have the facilities use report pulled from the consent agenda. However, I'd like to have the opportunity, based on our discussion in closed session, I may want to have the personnel and student support docket pulled from the consent agenda as well. So that Mr. Jordan's suggestion would allow us to do that.
Yeah, if I, since I was just trying to have a friendly discussion, but I will update my request in the form of a motion. I would like to move that we have the adoption of the business agenda moved from 1.03 to 3 dot 0.
Three.
Three, I guess, in front of the Pledge of Allegiance. And so maybe there'll be a second to that.
I second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion?
I do, I don't understand why we're moving it around.
The reason, the, Ms. Bassin just said that she would like to move it because she potentially, she's potentially wanting to take some executive items that will be on the consent agenda and pull them out. But she's, she's not going to, she's not going to be sure if she wants to do that until after the executive session.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I am supportive of my colleagues who would like to have items removed from the consent agenda should they want that to be. I think that as there has been preparation for the meeting today through agenda planning, allowing the opportunity to amend the business meeting agenda so that way personnel matters are off, student support, not off, but voted separately, student support matters of the facilities report. I'm totally comfortable with that, if that's what we'd like to, if that's what my colleague would like to do. But I would say that going into the closed session, we know what's going into the closed session. And so I don't think it would be a wise decision for us to amend the agenda coming out of the closed session at this point in time. So I would vote no, but I will be in support of my colleague if she would like to have certain items removed during this time as we are voting to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll, the question, sorry.
Aye. Hampson? Clanton?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Nay.
Jordan?
Aye.
Rousen?
Nay.
Martin?
Nay. Okay, can I get a motion then to, to pull the items?
Don't need a motion, I think she's just asking for them so they can just, it's a consent agenda. So if she's asking, if Ms. Bassin is asking for items to be pulled, we can just go and pull them now.
So, Dr. Martin?
You want to go ahead and pull the, you wanted to pull the personnel and facilities report, right?
Upon, upon review of the materials prior to this meeting, I already knew I wanted to have the facilities use document pulled from the consent agenda. However, I don't know at this point whether I want to have the personnel or student support pulled. But, you know, just as we go into closed session, we have a lot of questions about those two items. So in the closed session, depending on the outcome of that discussion, I may want to have it pulled, just as many of us have done around this room when we haven't agreed with, you know, a recommendation or, or some other issue. So I may want to. So at the end of closed session, I may request that I have, so and I think that's what the whole point of Mr. Jordan's suggestion or motion was that we then have that opportunity to do that then. But I'm just giving you the heads up that I may want to have those two items pulled.
And you can do that when we come, when we reconvene?
So, Madam Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to make facilities report, item 5.03.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion about moving the facilities report to 5.03?
No, but I would like to ask, since we're going through that process, if an amendment would be considered that in addition to the 5 dot 03, normally based upon our policy, we would also have committee reports. So I think what's missing from the business meeting agenda is committee reports, which I think also would include the opportunity for the student board rep report as part of committee reports. And so I would ask that the board also consider that as well.
So if you're asking for friendly amendment, my question would be, are there any committee reports? I mean, we've had legislative, I mean, are there facilities, is there, other than the student rep? I mean, is the student representative prepared for the day to give a report?
She's not giving a report today.
Okay.
Pardon? No, what I'm speaking to is the standard agenda.
No, I'm not talking about the standard. This is a motion regarding the agenda that's present before us today. We've taken a consideration to add it in the agenda during the agenda planning, but this is for today's agenda. So my question again, Mr. Jordan, was to my colleagues, are there reports from the committees? I don't think we've got one from policy, because we have a meeting that's coming up on the next week, right?
This week, on Friday.
Yeah, this week coming up. And there's facilities, and I don't think we've got a facilities report.
We had a whole retreat with the facilities.
So I don't, I, I hear you in regards to making sure it's standard there, but I don't think we need it for today.
Is, are there any legislative updates? I mean, I think there's, there's been a lot happening on the legislative front that it would give us an opportunity to talk about some of those things. But.
Do we have a legislative update? I mean, we got the email.
There are some, yeah, potential legal updates associated with the legislation that we'll be talking about in executive session.
Yeah.
Then I have one other friendly amendment, if you would consider it. Southside STEM Academy, I'd like to know if we could have a conversation about safety and security at Southside STEM Academy during our discussion agenda.
So that, that's a whole new item?
Yes.
Do you like to add to the agenda? I don't know that the administration's prepared anything on.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking the, yeah, I just, I just think that considering issues that the board can at least have some discussion around what's going on there and how we can potentially provide support for additional safety and security at, at Southside STEM.
I support that request.
Just to make of the motion, I don't, I think that it's highly inappropriate without it being given to our superintendent administration to be prepared to give us whatever information or to be asked as a report. To, at this particular point, ask for something that we've had no discussion about is highly inappropriate. So I don't accept it as a friendly amendment, and if you'd like to make it as an amendment, you can do it yourself, but I'm not.
I have it noted as a potential topic, if there's anything new to be reported, and, you know, to be added to another agenda, but not for today. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
No, we're just voting on the, my motion that I originally made to amend the agenda.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking, I didn't think that was second.
So we're adding the.
Facilities to 5.03.
Yeah, facilities report.
And aren't we adding the student board rep, or no?
No, she doesn't have a report.
But could it be an opportunity where if she had to, wanted even to ask us questions on, on topics that we've been discussing, that there is some level of engagement?
We'd need to prepare her before the meeting. This is something we can add to our next month's business meeting if she's, if she would like to do that. We can't just bring it on her.
I think that's been expressed, but somehow we're.
Well, last, last month, I had asked before the meeting, and she didn't have anything to report or to speak. And so I respected that, and so we'll do that again moving forward. Okay.
Hampson? Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into closed executive session.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel.
Ms. Tanner?
Actually, Dr. Martin, I don't think, I asked a question about the board rep, but I don't think I gave my vote.
You should have been the first one to, to give your vote.
Yeah, but then I asked a question about, are we adding the student board rep?
For the record.
Go ahead.
So I'm voting nay.
Did you get that? Ms. Tanner?
She's saying nay. All right. Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for: a) Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the City of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of the specific personnel on today's regular personnel agenda; b) Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of specific students on today's regular student agenda, student support agenda; c) Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is to choose a contractor from the responses to a previously issued request for quotes to provide governance training services and to discuss potential contract provisions; and d) Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating and litigating posture and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2 dash 3711 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A, B, and C of this motion, and advice of counsel regarding the legal issues raised by Governor Youngkin's new executive order number two and subsequent legal challenges to it. Bassin?
I'm voting no, because the contracts that are under consideration were provided this afternoon, not allowing ample time to review.
Hampson? Clanton?
Aye. As the resolution states, the board will have ample opportunity to have discussion, which has been requested by this board on numerous occasions. So yes.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
I agree with Ms. Bassin, a vote nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. Thank you all. We'll convene in the conference room. Come out of executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of executive closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to come out of closed session.
A resolution certify an executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. I now call the business meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan? Rousen?
Here.
And Martin?
Present. And thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Madam Chair? I'd like to move to amend the agenda as follows, by adding item 5.04, Personnel Docket as amended; item 5.05, the acceptance of the Governance Training RFQ.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. I think we also have additional matter associated with mask mandates.
Yes.
You're right.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
And I accept as a friendly amendment, 5.06, action related to mask mandate.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Okay, Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson? Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, just for clarification, can you read the numbers? So.
So 5.0, Madam Chair, 5.04 is Personnel Docket, Personnel Docket as amended; 5.05 is action related to governance training RFQ, and 5.06 now is action related to the mask mandate.
Clarifying question, if I may.
Sure.
What is 5.03?
That's what we voted on earlier regarding facilities report.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay, I thought it was still there.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Karma Johnson, our student representative, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, up next we have our superintendent's, oh, wait, no, we have our student, student performance with the Azalea Gardens Middle School Black History Month presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Lopez, Senior Coordinator of History and Social Science. During the month of February each year, we ask all schools to join us in paying tribute to the generations of African-Americans who struggled through adversity to achieve full citizenship in American society. While Norfolk Public Schools champions diversity and inclusion all year long, during Black History Month, our teachers, staff, and students make it a point to meaningfully celebrate Black achievement and give visibility to the people and organizations that create positive change. Today, we highlight the staff and students of Azalea Gardens Middle School who have created a comprehensive and engaging program to both honor and educate our students and community around Black history. From a virtual museum to door decorations and student projects and portfolios, Azalea Gardens Middle School exemplifies our commitment to honoring our proudly diverse community. Please enjoy as students from Azalea Gardens show you what they've been working on.
My last blueprint is that from this speech, everyone that Martin with the team says that you can be anything if you just put your mind to it and don't have any pressure on you from other people's opinions or exact reasons of why you shouldn't do something. You are free to do whatever you want. You are free to be who you are, God may just want a purpose.
This project has artists from the Harlem Renaissance, which is when Black people replayed their culture. My favorite artist is Duke Ellington, because he plays the piano. That's one of my favorite instruments.
This is a creative expression created by a student, and she's in high school from last year. And this is also created by students of Azalea Gardens. And this year for Black History Month for my creative expression contest, I'll be doing Emmett Till, because I want to point out the inequality of his case and of his death.
Expression through art, you know, to celebrate Black History Month, that was top notch. That art was very impressive. There's so much talent in this school. It's really an honor to be able to highlight it. So thank you. Thank you, Azalea Gardens. Okay, so we also have our superintendent's report. So go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
Month, we attempt to highlight all of the wonderful accomplishments of our students. And tonight, we have another video featuring many of our students and what they've been able to do since the last time we've met. And so I'm going to ask Channel 47 to please roll the video.
First grade students in Norfolk Public Schools are learning in a whole new way this school year. Instead of having the traditional science, English, or math block, all their subject areas are now integrated.
We have learning experiences, one, two, and three throughout the day. And the first experience could be social studies with a focus on writing, or it could be math with a focus on a reading story. So that's how it's really different from what we've done in the past.
It's just brought more energy into the classroom. Being that we're kind of changing the way we do things completely has made it fun. And integrating everything doesn't seem like you're going, okay, now we're doing math, now we're doing science, now we're doing social studies. We integrate it, and the kids love it because it's so hands-on.
Students are being provided an opportunity to learn with meaningful learning experiences that are connected to real-life situations. Additionally, that means that the engagement in the classroom is high. The support from central office has just been paramount to the success of the program. All of those things make for a win-win situation for our students and our staff members.
I like how hands-on everything is. I like that it's really succinct with the way, you know, we give them the information, but then they get to work with it, whether it's hands-on writing. And it gives me time to circulate and work with the kids individually to strengthen their own skills.
The students see the whole picture. Instead of dividing everything up, they can see how science has to do with social studies and how, you know, you can bring gardens into reading. And just letting them see that there's a big picture. Everything's not divided up. Everything is together, and they see it, I think, in a, in a better view.
School counselors across the district were recognized for their outstanding efforts during National School Counseling Week in February. Whether they're relatively new to counseling or seasoned veterans, our school counselors are committed to ensuring that their students get the very best educational experience.
As an elementary school counselor, we work on academics with the students. We also work on their social and emotional skills. And then we also discuss careers and careers of the future with our students. Well, I originally worked in the high schools, but you really feel like elementary has a lot of foundation. And, you know, if we can start the kids thinking positive, being kind to each other, learning how to work out their differences, that's going to make a big difference when they do get to middle and high school. So a lot of times, kids just need positivity and encouragement. And I think a lot of, that's what counselors do quite a bit, because they, once they feel good about themselves, then they're open to learning. Like, you know, you missed yesterday, but today's going to be a good day.
This is my second year being a school counselor at Northside. And I wanted to become a school counselor. I always had a passion for helping people. And so I thought of ways that I could do that. And a school counselor was kind of like, oh, you get to do it every day. And so it was a no-brainer for me. Well, I would say the primary function is to assist the students, school personnel, and parents with educational, personal, and social goals, all the while ensuring that, you know, we're able to help them successfully succeed. What I love most about my job is the opportunity I have to impact so many students in various ways. Just, you know, meeting them and helping them with their issues, empowering them, and helping them solve their own problems, and pushing through is, is a fulfilling feeling for me. And so that's what I love most about it, just seeing those students push through adversity and be able to come out on top.
I am here to advocate for students. I'm here to help students with their personal issues, their social issues or concerns, help them with their academics, to make sure that they are passing the goal for me, for my students, such as that every one of them graduates. I, I can't even say what I typically do every day, because it varies. It's, it's like always changing. I just have to be available. That is, that is my typical day, just being available. I love building my relationships with my students, with my team, I have an amazing team, and with teachers. That is what I'm working on, building more relationships with teachers. But I love the fact that I build these connections, relationships with my students.
Students at Taylor Elementary partnered with the United Way and the African-American Leadership Society to make valentines for senior citizens at local assisted living communities. After hearing a story about working together to help a community via Zoom, students got a quick lesson on making valentines.
I was really thankful, because not many people do those things these days. But I liked how she stepped up and came to read to us.
These valentines will be delivered to the communities, and in return, the seniors will send valentines to the students. For many of these students, this is the beginning of learning how to actively give back to others in their community.
It's the first basis of teaching them philanthropy, giving back. So it's really good to start with kids really young. So, it's really good to start with kids really young, to do an activity, to really encourage them to give back to people in their neighborhood, and it, and it's just a way of showing them how to spread kindness through love, with some, one simple act.
They need to learn more about their community and see how little acts of kindness can help, and how they can start to be involved even out of the young age, and be able to bring a smile to somebody else, and learn that it's not always about us, but it needs to be about everybody and that we're better together.
My Valentine isn't completely that I struck the color it. I made the owl. I feel very great that I can help people, just like they help people.
Learn that, like, to care for other people and make them happy, because they might get pretty lonely because their family can't visit them all the time. It makes me feel good, because we're making cards for other people, and it'll make them happy.
I hope that as our students are growing to be lifelong learners, they also want to continue in community service throughout the rest of their lives. It's an important factor, as human beings, to reach out to one another.
The first Wednesday in February is National Signing Day around the country, and MPS had a couple of schools with ceremonies of their own. At Booker T. Washington, two football players signed to play at the next level, while at Maury, 11 student athletes signed. Eight from the football team, one who will participate in women's crew, and two members from the girls' volleyball team.
I'm excited. It's been a long process over the last four years, and just especially this past year with the whole COVID process and recruiting has been completely messed up. So, it's very nice and relieving for have it, having the senior year to be halfway over and everything done.
Two of our signees had smooth transitions to their new schools this year.
It was a lot. From a different school, I immediately, I immediately felt like home. From the first day I was here, I immediately felt like home. Students made me feel like home, teachers, coaching staff, it was, it felt great.
Coming here to Maury, Coach McCain helped me set up great with my classes and everything. The teachers here have been phenomenal, helping, helping me with extra work, when I'm wanting to turn in extra assignments and everything. Just overall, this school here is just amazing.
As our student athletes continue to move on to the next phase, here's some words of advice for the next group.
Just work hard, and, you know, work through adversity, you know. When people hate on you, you just stay humble. When people hype you up, just stay humble, you know, it's, stay humble and just work hard. You know, the results going to show at the end of the day.
That was powerful.
Good advice, yeah.
That concludes my report, Madam Super, Madam Chair.
Get ready to give you some more responsibilities. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Okay, next up, we have our clerks' report.
Yes, Madam Chair, the clerk's report notes the following observances for February, which is the National School Counseling Week that's held February 3rd through the 7th. We have a proclamation posted on our board docs in recognition of how counselors are actively committed to helping students explore abilities, strengths, interests, and talent as these traits relate to their development and career awareness. National PTA Take Your Family to School Week is February 14th through the 18th, and yours truly, School Board Clerk Appreciation Week is this week, February 14th through the 18th. Had to dumb the shameless plug. February is, of course, Black History Month, Career and Technical Education Month, Crossing Guard Month, and the Virginia School Board Association's recognition of school board members all across the state of Virginia. And on behalf of the Virginia School Board Association, you have received a special recognition certificate at your desk right now to acknowledge your valued role as a school board member. And also, at your desk is a special treat, a jar of honey harvested from the bees under the care of Maury High School's Garden Club and sponsor David George, as a token of appreciation to acknowledge you all this week.
Very sweet gifts.
A what?
Very sweet gifts.
Yes, very sweet gifts. Yes. And Madam Chair, we have the following student recognition, starting with Viveka Bell of Mary Cowcut Elementary, who won the Delegate Bloxham's Annual Christmas Card Contest. Claire Chandler of Northside Middle School was published in Creative Communication. Maury High School's ROTC and CTE students received a team award with several members as the state winner for the Cyber Patriots competition. They advanced to the national semifinals. Lay Taylor High School's ROTC/CTE students received a team award with several members as a regional winner for the National Cyber Patriots Competition. Granby High School's FBLA and CTE students were recognized, recognized Tyler Villaflor as a regional winner for the category of impromptu speaking. Lily Gwynn of Maury High School received third place at the cross-country state finals. And Maury's Medical Health Specialty Program student Bella Sater was awarded the prestigious Spirit of the Oath Award at this year's white shirt ceremony. And that concludes my special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. Let's give the students a round of applause. And since you mentioned the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, I'd like to read this proclamation by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Excuse me, is that fogging up? Whereas, the Virginia School Boards Association has declared February 14th through the 18th of 2022 as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, as an acknowledgement of the important service school board clerks provide to their communities. And whereas, the School Board of the City of Norfolk wishes to participate in this important observance by recognizing the contributions of the School Board, of School Board Clerk Karen Tanner. And whereas Ms. Tanner has embraced and ably supported the important duties of the Norfolk School Board Clerk. And whereas, school board clerks such as Ms. Tanner are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings, proceedings, and official acts of the school boards. And whereas, Ms. Tanner often communicates with parents, employees, and members of the public who have questions about school board proceedings, including how to sign up to address their school board, and by virtue of those community connections regularly, serves as an ambassador for the school division. And whereas, Ms. Tanner and the performance of her duties is often required to work extra hours, attaining school board meeting, attending school board meetings and supporting the day-to-day business of the school board. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the School Board of the City of Norfolk, do hereby recognize the many and varied contributions of school board clerks in general and the diligent work of Ms. Tanner specifically, and therefore, commit to recognizing February 14th through 18th, 2022, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Thank you, Ms. Tanner.
Madam Chair, in addition, I'd like to present this letter of appreciation to Ms. Tanner on behalf of me and my wonderful administration for all of her hard work and her dedication to Norfolk Public Schools.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Okay, up next, we have citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Yes.
Show us your stuff, Ms. Tanner.
A what?
Show us your stuff. I'm saying, like, do your, you know.
Oh, okay. Okay, for tonight's public comments, speakers have three minutes to provide public comments. The timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. As a reminder, board members do not respond to public comments during this time. You are welcome to provide a copy of your remarks to the school board clerk to share with the board. You may also email your comments to schoolboard@mps.k12.vad.us. And Madam Chair, we have 14 speakers this evening, and we're doing something a little different this go-around. I'm going to have your name, and I'm going to mention your affiliation, so the board members will know when you're giving public comments who's speaking and what groups you may be with, because it may be a group of you all together. So, Madam Chair, our first speaker is John Page, who's a concerned voter, followed by Timothy Mallory, a concerned staff member and behavior specialist. So, Mr. Page, you can come forward.
Good evening, how's everyone doing?
Good, good evening.
All right. Thank you for the hard work you've been providing to the city of Norfolk. I'm here to address the superintendent's recommendation to the board to hold a public meeting on school closures and consolidations on March the 2nd. I am requesting that the board remove recommendations involving Lindenwood Elementary School, Todd Water Park Elementary, and Roughness Middle School from the March 2nd public hearing, and a proposed vote on March the 16th. To my knowledge, there has been zero administration, school board, or consultant meetings with the school communities leading up to the recommendations. Making decisions without genuine parent and community input is a direct contradiction to all of these goals and the priorities I hear you all talking about. The lack of engagement impacted communities in this way shows contempt, disrespect, and disregard towards the public. It is shameful that in the midst of this Black History Month, you appear to have learned so little about the history of Norfolk showing contempt in this matter, when it comes to schools and communities with large Black populations. Please correct your error, demonstrate achieving equity and excellence, and all is more than just a slogan. Pull Lindenwood, Todd Water Park, and Roughness from the hearing, and your plans until you hold a series of meaningful dialogue with parents, students, and residents in these school communities. Thank you.
Next, we have Timothy Mallory, followed by Veronica Thomas.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I do serve at Southside STEM as the behavior specialist for the middle school. I would like to speak about the happenings that took place on Monday with our shelter in place, that took place on the third floor and throughout the rest of the building. Most of our concerns were on the middle school floor, which is the third floor. And I want to target about the lack of security, security not moving quick enough, incompetent, in my opinion. Myself and my counterpart are security, unsafe every day. Nothing is really enforced with frequent flyers, meaning the consistent behaviors. And those frequent flyers are, majorly, are special ed students. Short staff severely in middle school, behavior specialist slash leadership, leadership, excuse me, unable to handle what needs to be handled with the many discipline issues, and lack of support slash staff shortage.
Ms. Thomas, followed by Benita Anthony.
Pastor Veronica Thomas, pastor of First United Presbyterian Church, 745 East 29th Street, Norfolk, Virginia 23504, also president of Let's Make a Difference. I did so everything that John Page says. We need to hear from the parents, especially the churches. Lindenwood is a school where my students go, in my church. Faith deliverance, care of His coming, Holy Jerusalem and New Bethlehem, 23504. We want to be able to say what we care about. And I don't know if you all know this song, but it really falls in with us. Tally Pendergraph. Remember this song that says, "Wake up, everybody." We need to wake up. Wake up, everybody, no more sleeping in bed, no more back for sleeping, time for thinking ahead. The world has changed so much from what it used to be, so there's so much hatred. And what, this was back in the 70s, when they sung this song. And then, it says, "Wake up, hallelujah, all the teachers, time to teach a new way." It's like they were right here with us. Maybe then, they'll listen to what you have to say, because they are the ones who coming up, and the world is in their hands. When you teach the children, teach them the very best you can. School board, you gotta wake up. The world won't get no better if we just let it be. The world won't get no better. We are the changers, yeah? Just you and me. Hallelujah, thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Next, we have Benita Anthony with NAACP, followed by Loren Jones with the NAACP.
Good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of the Norfolk Branch NAACP, our faith-based leaders, parents, students, and invested community members, our position is for you all to see us as partners. At the same time, you must remain intentional in your efforts to achieve equity and excellence for all students and families connected to Norfolk Public Schools. First, we would like to commend Dr. Birdsong and the City of Norfolk School Board for making sure that you adhere to the Division's existing safety and health protocols. We know everyone will not agree with that decision, but realize it is for the safety and health of students, families, and staff. So, again, thank you for your courageous efforts. Second, as a civil rights organization in partnership with other community stakeholders, we will continue to move forward to ensure that Norfolk Public Schools' American Rescue Plan and the Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief III Funds are allocated to schools serving historically underserved groups of students. So, I'll briefly go through a timeline of actions taken by the Norfolk Branch and our partners in education. December 15th, we read a letter at the MPS School Board regarding initial concerns about the lack of transparency from MPS to communicate how ARPESR funds will be spent. December 22nd, we received communications from Michelle Washington inviting organizations to attend a community inputs, input session of ARPESR funding plan by Dr. Poe. January 7th, the branch and other recipients received an email from Dr. Poe saying that MPS was required to conduct a public review and make updates to the ARPESR III spending plan every six months. Therefore, members of the select of Norfolk Branch attended a meeting scheduled for January 13th. January 15th, we sent the email to Dr. Poe, thanking him for that opportunity. We also included several concerns about the effectiveness of how ARPESR will provide positive outcomes and reduce the map, math, and reading gaps for at-risk students. We extended an invitation to include Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Gibson for a panel discussion of our branch and other community partner leaders to review those concerns. January 20th, Dr. Poe declined the offer. And so, and therefore, he said in the email, "We welcome any questions that you have in written form." So, therefore, as of today, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, in collaboration with our community partners, emailed Dr. Poe with our questions about how funding will advance the academic performance specifically for schools with a more significant number of at-risk students. So, I'm asking you, the board, and to make sure that we receive our responses in a timely manner by Thursday, February 22nd. This is from your partners in education, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, and the Let's Make a Difference Coalition.
Loren Jones, followed by Vicky Greco, a parent.
Good evening.
This letter is a follow-up to an email and conversations held with Dr. James Poe, Chief Academic Officer. We, the Norfolk Branch NAACP, and our partners in education, are eager to have yet another opportunity to seek clarity about the use of American Rescue Plan Act in elementary and secondary school relief funds that were provided to the district to meet the urgent needs of students and educators. Since our last email communication, we noticed that an amendment has been made to the Norfolk Public Schools' spending plan. We would like to acknowledge the additional $3 million increase moved from the prevention and mitigation category into the additional unfinished learning category. However, many schools are still experiencing low academic performance, staff shortages, and lack of instructional coherence. In your previous email, you stated that the spending plan was developed to support students in schools based off of need, not equal distributions based on student enrollment. Based on your statement, we have identified several schools which historically have shown to be in need or at risk of demonstrating low academic performance. In addition, the same schools currently have classroom teacher vacancies in major core areas such as math, reading, English, and special education. This leads us to our questions. Which schools have you all identified as having the greatest needs as it relates to the academic impact of lost instructional time? What is the specific plans to address the academic impact of lost instructional time to close the learning gap within the identified schools with the greatest need that may be exacerbated by the significant shortage of classroom teacher vacancies? In the absence of having inadequate bus drivers, what are the plans to ensure that all identified schools where there is a significant academic learning gap can attend before and after-school programs, as well as Saturday school tutoring programs to address the loss of instructional time or learning loss? Name the 30 schools who will receive the HVAC upgrades. To complete the creation of and maintain an online school, Virtual Scholar Academy, to have support, to support students who want to continue to learn virtually, as well as students who want to have blended learning opportunities, how many of these students fall into the following categories? Students from low-income families, students of color, students with disabilities, English learners, students experiencing homelessness, children in youth in foster care, migratory students, and children who were incarcerated? We stand committed to our efforts to eliminate discriminatory practices in public education. We stand committed to our efforts to eliminate discriminatory practices in public education and study local educational conditions affecting minority groups. We look forward to hearing from you by or on February 4th, 24th, 2022. Sincerely, the Norfolk branch NAACP and the Let's Make a Difference Coalition.
Vicki Greco followed by Nicole Anthony, a parent.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Manuga-Greco. I'm an MPS parent and Lake Taylor graduate, former special educator, and current PTA and school board advisory committee volunteer. I'm grateful to know that the school board advisory committee application window, which has been open since January 15th and closes March 1st, has resulted so far in a number of new applicants to the two SBACs that I serve on, the Special Education Advisory Committee, or CAC, and the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, or GAC. We hope parents and members in our MPS community know they are welcome to attend our monthly 6:00 PM meetings, which are currently held virtually via Zoom and on the first Thursday of the month for the CAC and second Tuesdays for the GAC. As you know, the Norfolk advisory committees take their work seriously. We watch the board work sessions and take notes of policy discussions, student outcomes, and division planning efforts. We come in person or stream board business meetings and public hearings as our family and work schedules allow. Like the school board that we help to advise, we submit informed concerns and recommendations based on data and shared experiences from students, families, and school staff on the front lines by way of annual reports and timely emails to the board and superintendent as needed. We forward our written recommendations to our board and superintendent about what we know about how effectively the academic, social, emotional learning needs of our students are being met so that the board and administration are even better informed about stakeholder experiences and feedback. We also hope this consideration of concerns by MPS leaders extends to the ad hoc steering committees and community conversations that occur when we're asked to provide input, as in the case of the ongoing facilitation work and consultant firms hired by the division for educational and facilities planning and the five-year strategic planning efforts by school administration. MPS stakeholders like me often wonder how the different strategic planning efforts will converge along with our equity policy and the operational and capital improvement budget planning and the planned spending of the division's awards of millions of dollars from the American Rescue Plan and elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. We stakeholders depend on the serious expectation that sunshine, or what we call transparency, in our elected governing bodies such as the school board, city council, and the general assembly in session now in Richmond allows us to know key decisions and policies that affect our daily lives and to engage, advocate, and give feedback on behalf of our students, families, teachers, and school staff with meaning and purpose. As with any respectful collaboration on behalf of the success of our students, members of the advisory committee really hope that our recommendations are being heard and heeded by our governance team of decision makers and policymakers in our school division. If that's not the case, then why meet regularly, take the time to write evidence-based reports, and attempt to effect change? As author Ray Bradbury wrote, "Action is hope. There is no hope without action." We understand and appreciate our very different perspectives from the different places where we sit and observe and live and work. However, all these plans, plans, plans are only as good as the strategic smart, smart, smart goals and objectives within the plans and the real engagement of and authentic follow-through with MPS stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Poehl Anthony, a parent, followed by Courtney Skinner with NFT.
Good evening. Good evening. Initially, I was going to play a video for all of you to listen to my friend share with me this morning. However, I did not want to subject you all to this trauma porn that I experienced from Southside STEM Academy from their lockdown. The video was horrific and traumatizing for a parent to see, but I can't imagine how the students were feeling as their friends screamed and others huddled in the corner like they're in a war-torn state. As I watched, I wondered, what precipitated this event? What could have school officials done to prevent this trauma-filled event from occurring? How could they have been more proactive versus reactive? Norfolk seems to always be in a reactive stance. Will there be counseling for the students who are more than likely traumatized by police taking their friends into custody? Great questions to ask. The pandemic has shown a spotlight on the savage inequalities and learning and social, emotional growth or inequalities in growth for our students in Norfolk. School closures and school isolation has affected students, but in particular, our students in poverty, our black students, our students with disabilities. And some of our students can check off multiple boxes. Adding to the damage to learning and mental, to learning, there's a mental health crisis emerging. It is here, not emerging, it is here. We are seeing the effects of the pandemic in our children in this uptick in behaviors. We have an influx of dollars via ESER funds to address some of our most pressing issues. However, it's not quite clear how you're going to spend the funds. Yes, there's an allocation of dollars, but there's no strategic plan in place for how those dollars are spent. How are you calculating learning loss for the students? Ms. Anthony, there's no plan. There's no plan, parents. So I'm gonna stop talking to the school board for a moment. I'm gonna speak to the parents. We have the power.
That's right.
Look what happened with our governor's race. Parents did that. Governor Youngkin is now setting up phone lines. He is being held accountable to the parents who elected him. You need to be held accountable.
That's right.
Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Nothing about us, without us. We're tired. We're over it. Do something. Stop rubber-stamping things that are happening and occurring, thinking that the parents don't care because we do. And I'm asking all of you parents today to continue to show up and show out until we see changes happen with our students. Because I'm tired. And when you're tired, you fight.
That's right.
And it's time to fight.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calhoun with NFT.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I am here to ask for clarity for the school board members. On January 28th, Dr. Linnell Gibson sent an email out stating that special education and resource teachers are not to be paid for covering classes or holding students from other classes. You all have a copy of this email in front of you. It reads, quote, "These teachers are not doing additional work during their normal workday. They are doing different work. We cannot pay extra amounts because of the first job is not being done in conjunction with or in addition to covering classes or a portion of it." Did the board approve this change in policy? So essentially, if special education and resource teachers are covering classrooms or receive students from other classrooms, they do not receive extra pay, according to Dr. Gibson. However, on November 3rd school board session, the board voted to approve Superintendent Birdsong's recommendation, end quote. The board also voted to approve Superintendent Birdsong's recommendation to provide compensation for teachers who substitute in other teachers' classrooms during their planning time or who provide instructional coverage for students when a classroom of students must be divided among teachers. So today, I stand before you to gain clarity on this matter. It is confusing and highly misleading. Is the recommendation that the board approved in November still in effect? Is this change just for special ed and resource teachers? And lastly, does this mean that all of the teachers, all of the other teachers, do they get paid? And why was this change made? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thomas Calhoun with NFT followed by Tanya Canty, staff.
Good evening, Mr. Calhoun.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Calhoun. I'm president of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. One month ago, I was here speaking about Ms. Belida LaChance. She's a special ed teacher. She got a written reprimand because she was spending some extra time with her students. So Ms. Glenda Walters, director of special ed, wrote her up for spending some extra time. Last Wednesday, Ms. LaChance was admitted to the hospital. She was diagnosed with high blood pressure, increased anxiety levels, cardiac issues, and abnormally high stress. This was on a Wednesday. See, because that's what happens to her on Wednesdays. Two Wednesdays a month, she has to meet with Candace Delpino, Denise Williams Patterson, and Glenda Walters. Two Wednesdays every month, the entire special ed administration. The other two Wednesdays, she just meets with Candace Delpino. You see, every Wednesday, she's in meeting with these people. Every single day she works, she has to send an email to Glenda Walters, the director of special ed, every day, just to tell her what her schedule is for that day. Every single day. The director of special ed. Look like maybe she would have something else to do. When she left the hospital, the doctors told her, say, "Well, you cannot sustain this level of stress." She is home now, scheduled, I think, to go back around the 25th. Told the doctor, put Ms. LaChance for the first time in her life on high blood pressure medication. I came to you last week and told you this ridiculous story about doing too much for your special needs kids. It appears that the entire administration would have something else to do. On Monday, Glenda Walters sent her email and said, "When you come back, we gonna meet on March 1st, soon as you get back from work. Oh, and by the way, it's gonna be a fourth administrator gonna meet with us on Wednesdays." Tiffany LaChay from Human Resources will be joining us. Four administrators meeting with one person. I guess they got a lot of free time. Special ed is doing fine. Four administrators. I can't believe y'all continue to let this happen. You know about retaliation and harassment. They arrested right into the hospital. I'm here tonight to tell you what happened. I'm gonna be here next month and next month till somebody stop these three women for what they doing to this special education teacher. Thank you.
Nancy Faf and Nicole Saunders, general, parent.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be up here and explain to you. I am a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade social studies teacher at Southside STEM Academy. I am from New Orleans, worked in New York, and in the projects for four years, and never have I ever been more terrified than working with middle schoolers at Southside STEM. The insubordinate tactics of these students and the way they treated not only staff and other students, but Norfolk police. There was an officer, two officers, that got stuck in a room with about 30 students. Most of those students were not supposed to be in there. And they were throwing chairs, desks, full water bottles at these police officers. Finally, a third one came in to the classroom and pulled out his taser, did not use it, but threatened the students to back off and stop throwing things at the officers. I'm watching through the window. I have a planning period, that period when everything was going down, and I couldn't tell you the heartbreak I felt for those students that were just here to learn, to be at school, to be students. And they were sitting under the whiteboard. I'm just thinking, hide under a desk. And I scanned the room and I catch the eye of one of the students that, again, I've only taught here since January 3rd of this year. And I've written this one particular student up three times. And I caught her eye as I was scanning the room, and she looked at me and did this, like to me, and then picked up a chair and threw it at the window at me. And I'm just like, this is absolutely insanity that these students are acting like this. These are children. These are middle schoolers. These are not young adults in high school. And it was just terrifying for me to see the students, not only the ones causing all the problems, but the ones that were innocent and just trying to, and traumatized as these students, these rude and totally insubordinate and disruptive and throwing things at police officers and talking to them with such vulgar language, spitting on them. It was just out of control. And Southside STEM needs support, needs way more support than what it's even, it's just, it's pathetic. It's absolutely pathetic, and I hope that you guys can step up and do something for the students and staff and the safety of us at Southside STEM.
Thank you.
Nicole Sanders, who's a parent, followed by Lana Presley, Villa Heights Civic League.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think it's ironic that the video you all showed with the children and the staff talking about community and engagement, and that's what you showed us, you know, coming in and, you know, you guys were all happy and showing us this like it was some flowers you're giving us, but you're not doing the same thing. You're not transparent. You don't engage in the community. How many of these parents, myself included, have to come up here and tell you what's going on? You're on social media, you're asking for our help. We're here, we're telling you what's going on. This is no secret about what's going on at Southside STEM, right? This is not the first time these parents have come here. No, my children do not go there, but I'm in the community. I have other friends, I have students. These are people that are affected with me on a daily basis that I have to hear this information from. No, they can't always come, but guess what? I can. I'm gonna come up here and I'm gonna speak. You got issues with, you sitting here telling us what you're gonna do, but you don't ask us anything. What's going on with Lindenwood? When are you talking to the communities? When are you coming out here? You ask us to vote for you. You ask us to do whatever you need. Oh, I'm gonna step up, I'm gonna be a community servant. Do you know what that is? Do you know the definition of it? You can't, because these issues that these parents, the community that we're having, if you were so proactive, right? Instead of letting people come to you, give you a piece of paper in your city and tell you, oh, this is what's gonna happen, when do you say no? All I hear is yes, 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 yes. Do y'all come to these schools? Do you engage in the community? Do you even care about anything that we come up here and say for three minutes? City council don't care, but you know what she said? Wake up. You ain't gotta wake up. We up. We here. We're powered, we're motivated, you're not staying in office. We coming for everything that we're gonna get. Our students are not gonna suffer no more. My children are not gonna suffer. These are my babies, right? They don't have to come for me biologically, but guess what? They still changemakers in the city of Norfolk. You want these kids to come back? Treat them right. Treat these parents right. Treat the community right. We're done with the broken promises. How much more can we take? I'm tired of coming to meetings, talking to y'all for three minutes, and you don't care. You don't care, but we're gonna show you better than we can tell you. So you could sit here, nonchalantly, not caring, not reaching out. I guess, I don't know if y'all really read the papers that the folks give you. I don't know how many people you've reached out to. I don't know what schools you come to, but guess what? Playtime is over, we're done, and we are definitely working in the background. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Lana Presley with Villa Heights Civic League.
Good evening.
Good evening. Council, board. We understand that Norfolk Public Schools is in the process of reassessing the needs of the district with respect to the physical state of existing facilities and would like to have the opportunity to give our input on what happens to the schools and our communities. I think that we've heard from several people I think that we've heard from several people already who have addressed this in a format that I'm hoping that you will take a look at and take seriously. According to the proposal presented at the February mid-year retreat by Cooperative Strategist Consultants, Lindenwood Elementary School will be closed as an elementary school and repurposed to house the students and staff population currently at Madison Alternative School. They also stated that this geographic area of the city contains the highest concentration of schoolchildren in the city. We would like the opportunity, and we're asking for that. We are respectfully requesting the opportunity to speak with our school board and city council representatives to discuss other possibilities for the school building before a final decision is made on the fate of our beloved school. We request, we respectfully request that you postpone voting on the facilities plan until a public, and we do mean public, community meeting can be held for this discussion. We look forward to hearing from you soon concerning this matter, and you have a letter of the same in your email today. I would also like to add that this plan is a continuation of the environmental racism imposed on the students and staff at Lindenwood, as well as community members who live in the vicinity. When the Annex Building was demolished during the instructional day, this occurred during the year of online learning, but after students and staff returned for in-person learning, the building was torn down while the kids were present on the property. I'm sure that there are some environmental issues that needed to be addressed by this, but we thank you for your time. We voted for you. We voted for you, every one of you, and we would like to see you come to our community, invite parents, invite community, and let's sit down and talk about Lindenwood Elementary School. We understand that an alternative school is going to be placed there. Well, how did we come to place the alternative school in an economic depressed community already? How was that determined? Who made those decisions? So, we just come tonight to ask you respectfully that you invite yourselves to our community, invite the parents, so you can hear from them. We appreciate you. We appreciate all the hard work that you do. I've heard some things here tonight that I've not heard before. I've not been all that involved, but when they called me and said they were closing Lindenwood, I was like, wait a minute, hold up. You know, something's got to be done. We understand that you're sending those children to two separate schools. Well, you know, that's an educational experience for those children. It may be an educational experience, excuse me, for those children. We're hoping so, but to put an alternative school in smack dab in Lindenwood, I think we need to talk about that a little bit more.
Ma'am, we hear you, and in all fairness, we just, we need to discontinue this. You had three minutes, and your three minutes is up.
I did not hear the bell. Excuse me.
Okay, I'm just letting you know. So, thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin, we had Benita Anthony and Laron Jones sign up twice.
So, we are done with our comments.
Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Hendricks declined to speak, so that's the end of our speakers for tonight.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I really appreciate the attention that you're paying to the work that we're doing and your involvement and your advocacy for the students in this district. And I do want to add that we do have a public hearing on the consolidation of the Easton Preschool into the Fairlon Elementary School, Madison Alternative Center, Tidewater Park Elementary School, into the repurposed Ruffner 3 through 8 School, and the rezoning of students at Lindenwood Elementary on March 2nd. And a public announcement will be made within ten days prior to that meeting as normal. So, I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
May I say, have you all noticed that March the 2nd is Ash Wednesday? I just want you to think about that. You know, most of the things you have on Wednesday, I'm a pastor, I changed my prayer service to tomorrow night so I could be here, but Ash Thursday, Ash Wednesday, I can't change that. Thank you so much.
Okay, up next, we have the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda, which contains bills and payroll reports and approval of minutes?
Madam Chair, move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
My second.
Thank you, Dr. Rousen. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Basine.
Aye.
Kamson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Rousen.
Aye.
And Martin.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. I'm going to see if I get this right, because Section 5 has been changed. Okay, so we have 5.01, the monthly financial report. Mr. Jenkins? Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll see you whenever you're ready.
Okay. Let's see. We'll start with, well, good evening Chairman Martin, Vice Chairman Clanton, Dr. Bursong, and members of the school board. Tonight, before I review the financial report, I just wish to recognize your budget office and the Executive Director Pearl Tal for having received the distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Officers Association. The award is a significant achievement by Norfolk Schools. It reflects your commitment as a governing body and the staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, we had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines included or include designing or designed to assess how well we are at budget services, and they include a policy, or the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communication device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories to receive the award. We are very pleased to receive the award and thank Ms. Tal for demonstrating excellence. We also commend both the school board and Dr. Bursong for its commitment to the highest standards in budget development.
Congratulations to Ms. Tal. Give her a round of applause.
For the January financial report, this covers seven months for the fiscal year that started in July. During the period, we've collected 177.3 million of general fund revenue. This is approximately 50% of our budget. Collections during the same period of the previous years were 48.8% last year and 51.6% in fiscal 2020. On page three of the highlights, we provide a graph of revenue and spending. By the end of January, we had spent or encumbered 171 million, almost 48% of the budget. During the previous two years, spending for the same period was 48.8% in 2021 and 52.6% in fiscal 20. So, our spending is down just a bit from the previous two years. Page four includes graphs that indicate monthly spending to date, along with revenue for the current and previous two years, and there's more detailed information available to you, starting on page five. During January, there were no budget transfers exceeding $50,000. Dr. Martin, that concludes my report for January. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you for the report. Can you give us a sense of where we are right now in terms of estimates around carryover fund potential for carryover funds, where we may be at this time of the year?
I don't have exact estimates on all accounts. I will say that we have had a large number of vacancies, and I think we're planning to provide a report on March the 3rd to that effect, but our vacancies are very high, and we're certainly going to have a large amount, we're experiencing large savings.
And I know we have the budget presentation coming up soon. Can you just remind me also the budget calendar that we have moving forward and how the carry, potential around carryover funds impacts that?
Well, the budget calendar, we are pretty deep into it at this point. The next meeting, the next work session, we will present the budget. Dr. Bursong and I will present that to you. I believe you also have a public hearing that same evening, and you are scheduled to vote on the operating budget, which will include grants and the capital portion for fiscal 23 on this, I believe it's the 16th, two weeks later. From, at that point, we are required, and will do so, send that to the city manager to meet your statutory requirements, and at that point, it belongs to the city council. They should, I think they have hearings scheduled either in, I think, in May, and they would vote on it in May. If there are differences between the budgets that we request and what council approves, we will certainly bring that back to you, generally in late May. As far as funds that are remaining in the budget, we will have something to present to you on the 2nd of March regarding the funds that are remaining in the fiscal 21 budget. We, actually, we're later in the agenda, we will talk, we have Ms. Coleman here from the auditing firm, and so we are concluding our engagement for fiscal 21, June 30 of 2021. So, we will have recommendations to you on March for the use of the reversion funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Chair, I move that we adopt the financial report as presented. Thank you. Can I get a second?
My second.
Thank you, Dr. Rousen. Any discussion? Hey, go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Basine.
Aye.
Kamson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Rousen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye. And then up next, we have the financial audit presentation.
Yes, Chairman Jordan, Chairman, woman, Martin, excuse me. Tonight, I get, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing your auditor, and I would say that each year Norfolk Public Schools undertakes an independent audit of the financial statements to ensure that our reports accurately reflect our financial position. At this point, our audit is nearing completion, and we anticipate a final report very soon. Once the auditors have completed the quality control procedures, we will post the fiscal 21 annual comprehensive financial report, along with the auditor's opinion on our website. I want to express my appreciation for Accounting Director Stan Hobbs and Accounting Manager Sandra Gaskins for their role in completing the financial reports. While our auditors review all the reports and supporting documents, it's Stan and Sandra who gather all the information and prepare the reports. So, thanks to both of them for their dedication and perseverance. Tonight, Ms. Aries Coleman is with us. She is our certified public accountant with the firm Clifton Larson &amp; Allen. She is charged with verifying and making sure that our reports are accurate. She and her team have been very helpful to us, and we appreciate the cooperative spirit they bring to the engagement. Ms. Coleman will now talk about the audit to you and be happy to answer any questions. So, thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Welcome, Ms. Coleman.
Hello, how are you doing?
How are you this evening?
I'm great. Happy New Year to everyone.
And Valentine's Day.
And Valentine's Day. I thank you very much for allowing me to have a little bit of your time. You had a busy day, a lot going on, so I appreciate you listening to me for the next couple of minutes. As Mr. Jenkins just mentioned, I am here to present the final results for the School Systems 2022, and it's going to be a new name, Acra. It's not CAFRA anymore, just due to being more sensitive. The word CAFRA, it was comprehensive, and your financial report is a, is sensitive to some persons in Africa, so being prospective or being proactive, General, the government association basically has named it Acra, so now it's annual comprehensive financial report. So, that's going to be a new word. You'll hear me saying Acra. I presented to you guys a couple of times, so the presentation will be pretty much the same. As Mr. Jenkins mentioned, first, I do want to give thanks to Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Hobbs, you know, Sandra. We do meet, as part of this process, we meet with Superintendent Dr. Sonberg. We also meet with Ms. Kamson as part of the Audit Committee. So, it really is a risk-based approach, meaning that we do not, as part of our audit, when we're given the opinion, it's not over every transaction, it's risk-based. Through a series of interviews, looking at trends, we determine what are the high-risk areas, and we do testing over those in accordance with general audit accounting principles and government auditing standards. As Mr. Jenkins mentioned, the audit is actually complete. Right, today, we do not have a final product in your hand because it's going through our QC review, but we are confident to present to you to say that the audit is final, meaning that there are no numbers are going to be changed, and the opinion that we are, I'm going to present today will be the final opinion. So, the final opinion for the fiscal year 22 Acra is unmodified. Unmodified used to be unqualified, but it's the highest level of assurance that we are allowed to give for the audit, meaning that the, all the information presented by the financial team was in accordance with general accounting principles, and also, we look at government auditing standards because you are a government entity. Also, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over financial reporting. This is another letter that we issue as part of government auditing standards, and we look at the internal control processes that surround the financial information that's presented to us to audit. When you do receive the Acra, it's about 200 pages. It's a lot of information to read. With three pages in there, that's the auditor's opinion, that is the only thing that is my firms. That is what we give over the information. So, all the hundred and so pages that are left, really was prepared by the school system. It was reviewed, it was presented to us, and we basically look at it and do procedures to make sure it's reasonable and reasonably stated in accordance with principles that we audit under. Excuse me. I want to also mention that you also, it's also a good accolade that the school system has received the GFOA, Government Financial Officer Association, and ASBO, which is the Association of School Board Certificate of Financial Excellency for, I am so tongue-tied tonight, I don't know why I had a bottle of water, and now I drank it all, so I apologize. They received this for the fiscal year 21 Acra that was submitted, and you will see that's part of the full package for the financial statements. And what that says, although the auditors are giving the opinion, this is their peers, this is what, you know, ASBO is a peer financial organization, looking at the information that's presented as part of the school system, and then you had GFOA, which is looking at across the country, all financial information presented by various governments. So, to get that certificate is really a, it's really a good standing for the information that's being presented. What's new this year, Gadsby 84, which is the, look at the fiduciary statements, and what you will see change is student activity funds, and I think you guys had some nursing, school nursing funds that were in your agency funds or your fiduciary funds. Those are no longer presented in that category. They are now presented along in the special fund, financial statements, and with Gadsby 84, it took a look at items that were considered as agency or custodial funds, and it said, if the school system actually has control, all those student activity funds are for the students, the actual control of those funds- are for the students, the actual control of those funds really resides at the the school level. So instead of saying they're agency or custodial, they actually are put into the main financials. And that changed a little bit as far as how we look at those funds and some of the audit procedures that we apply to them. The other audit that's going, that's in process right now is the look at the financial information for your federal programs. The school systems, federal programs are audited in conjunction with the cities as part of the Commonwealth's reporting process. So we are doing that audit, we're waiting on the city to kind of finish some of their numbers so we can select programs and finish testing. And then we will we will present the final report to the accounting department. There are a couple of disclosures I want to make to the board as part of the audit and audit process. There were no material statements that was identified by us and correct and requested to be corrected by the school system. There are a few, excuse me, it's alarm. There are a few items in the financial statements that we consider as estimates, meaning that they are not hard numbers. They are based on various assumptions. And we look at those assumptions to make sure it's reasonable to generate that estimate. And that's going to be the pension and OPEB liability. Those are based on actuarial evaluations, as well as the self-insurance IBNR, which is incurred but not reported. That's also based on actuarial information. Management was required to give us representation of the financial statements. And with their representation, they are stating that all the information provided was accurate. Nothing has changed since 630, 630, 2022, which is the timeframe that we are auditing, that nothing has changed as of today, when I'm speaking to you February the 16th. We didn't have any disagreements with management. As part of the financial statements, there's other information that's reported in the back and it's called required supplemental information and supplementary information. The auditors, we do not issue an opinion over that. We do look at it to make sure it's reasonable in accordance with the items that we do audit. That's behind the notes. And just overall, if you're new to looking at the Acra, there is, it's a analysis called Management Discussion Analysis. And I just, I would recommend you read that. It gives you a really good analysis of year-to-year comparison with the activities of the school board. After that, you get into a lot of things that are a little more deeper, give you more line item descriptions and details. But for first-time readers or just a summary, I would I would recommend reading the Management Discussion Analysis. That concludes my presentation for tonight. Any questions?
Thanks, Ms. Coleman. Any questions for her? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm not sure if my questions are for you or Mr. Jenkins. But I know you, can you just explain or state again when you said the document, the report would be available?
When it will.
That you were working, that it wasn't final yet?
So we have, as part of the audit process, we wrap up, we have a QC process. So all the testing is done, we have the final opinion is done. But until we get an actual signature from our QC team, we are not allowed to publicly display the document or release it. So it's really, it's really a more of an administrative matter.
Okay. And but the anticipated timeframe for that is?
Um, well, we hope within the next, I think the school system is closed next week. But we hope within the next week or so, we should have that.
Okay. And then you mentioned in your presentation, looking at the, you know, government funds, if I understood that correctly. So does that include the ESR and ARP and other funds that we've been receiving over the last couple of years, I have received as relates to?
So that will fall under your federal program audit, which is, as I mentioned, is coupled with the city. And those programs will more likely be reviewed. What we do is take, we look at them and we assess the risk. And so with the ESR funds, the ARP funds, your CARES funds, those are high-risk areas. So yes, we should be looking at those this year.
And so from a from a board perspective, I know you, obviously, the the relationship between what you're doing and management. If there, if the board had something that we wanted you to give attention to, is that is that appropriate? And is there a process for that if it is appropriate?
It definitely is. When we audit, although we work with management, we are hired by the board. And that's why we make certain communications with you. As I mentioned, we do meet with the Audit Committee. Ms. Camson is part of the Audit Committee, and I meet with her, you know, several times a year. You may, you know, convey that to Ms. Camson, or you may ask to have a meeting with with the auditors yourself.
And then the my last question is, I remember last year when you gave us the executive summary, it included references to the fund balance, the carryover funds. You familiar with what I'm talking about?
But that'd be more on a management level, I think that was given to you by management. We don't really go into the act, because that's the fund, how fund balance is used. And carryover is really a management tool. We just look at the propriety of it, but no, we wouldn't, that'd be more for Mr. Jenkins.
Okay. Can you just describe for me, when you say the propriety of it, what that means?
So we're making sure that the fund balance, that what rolls into the fund balance is actual true fund balance. There's various, you know, fund balance is what's left left over. You have your assets, you have what money is owed to others. And then at the end of the day, what's left over for the school board to use for various reasons. So we look at that to make sure that fund balance, the pot of money at the end of the day, based on all the other line items that's above it, are reasonably stated and are supported by documentation.
Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Coleman. I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
I know we have additional items that we're going to deal with. Our student rep, Ms. Johnson, was asking me if there was an opportunity for her to speak. I know earlier in the meeting, we didn't anticipate that we would have that opportunity. And I just want to know if before we adjourn, if we could give her an opportunity to address, address the board.
I think that's fine. Is that what she'd like, Ms. Johnson? Okay, well, let us get through the section five of our decision discussion agenda, and then we can make some time for you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, so let's see, we're not voting on that. Okay, up next, we have the facilities report.
Madam Chair.
Wait, am I, did I miss one?
No, you're right, 5.03.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the facilities report.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, so so one of the concerns or questions that I have about the facility use is the the piece on transportation. And I don't, Mr. Jenkins, this might be for you. So one of the current concerns that I've had is that, and you might be able to explain this. But when I look at the our community use policy and the fee structure that that we have in place, where does transportation fall fall in there? Because I don't see that reflected. And so it's hard for me to understand, like, what what fees are we charging? And if is, are you, because it's been included in the facility use, do we need to amend our policy to to reflect what that fee structure is? And, you know, I'd like to hear more about it because we've been asked to vote on that. And it's been unclear to me.
Right. And I would say that it's it's not facilities in the traditional sense, it's obviously not a building. But because it's, it involves the use of assets that belong to the school board, we have put it on the report, it comes in as as funds for use of facilities, it's for use of school buses. And this particular one is a, it's a, it's an after-school program that that's at J Cox. And we are transporting children home from that, from that, from J Cox for that program. And so the the Caro's Freedom School is is the ones that operate it. And they are paying, they're paying us so that we can transport those children home. I suspect that they are children that are attending J Cox, and this is an after-school date, an after-school daycare type of situation. So their parents are paying fees, and some of the fees are paying for the transportation. So that's why it's on the report, is to whether this belongs on the report. I mean, I, we're bringing it to you because it comes into us every month.
Right. And I guess that's the broader question is, you know, we've been asked to adopt the facility use report that includes the transportation piece without really a full understanding of of what it's being used for and what the fee structure is. Like, for instance, we know for parking lots, for different, you know, use of property, school property, we know what the fee structure is for custodians, you know, whatever it may be. And, you know, I don't know what it is, what the hourly rate is for use of buses, you know, how do we determine that? You know, all of those questions that we discussed when developing this policy for the other areas, you know, I don't feel like we as a board have really had that discussion with transportation. So because we're being asked to vote on it, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the full board because we either, I don't know where it belongs, like you said, you know, I don't I don't know where it belongs. But if it is part of our community use process, then perhaps we need to make it clear in our policies and regulations, which right now, I'm not sure where that is explicitly stated.
Yeah, I don't believe it's in your policy stating a rate for the use of school buses. That is not, that that would, that would be accurate.
I'm not understanding, what, can you explain that again? I'm not following.
So in our community use facilities policy, you know, it describes the different areas, different.
Rental fees.
Yeah, the fees. And that's in the in the Community Use of School Facilities Form, which is item, which is policy KGZC-F1, which is the form. And in that, it doesn't have anywhere where you can indicate that you're requesting the use of transportation. And in the fee structure, it doesn't also explain what the, in the Regulation of Community Use of Facilities Fees and Insurance, which is KGZC-R, it doesn't explain what the fees are for transportation. So we've been asked to vote on that for the last couple of months, which has been one of the, you know, reasons I haven't, at times when it's on there, I haven't voted to support it because I don't know that we as a board have really made the decision to include that in the community use.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, I can even think of last year, there were buses, transportation on there. But, okay, I understand what you're saying now. Go ahead.
So I'm perfectly comfortable with the Policy Committee reviewing that policy and with the assistance of the superintendent to put in a fee structure for what that might be so that everything is clear and transparent for what the fees of bus rentals could be. And if there's, you know, they can have a little caveat, you know, can seek further clarification, you know, if if needed. I'm completely fine with the Policy Committee doing that.
Anyone opposed sending this to the Policy Committee?
No, but I would ask, in addition to that, so if I understand, when we, the Freedom Schools is a, at least I think, I know they received one of the 21st Century Learning Center grants. I don't know if this is the specific one that's that's associated with that. But I know that they had received the grant, I guess in partnership with the school system. So as you, as we look at the transportation fees, if the Policy Committee could also just look at, you know, what happens, like, if if North Public Schools is partnering with an entity to get a grant to provide services to our children, how that might differ than, say, if Rodney Jordan, Inc. was just doing something and wanted to rent buses? So, you know, I don't know how all that works, but if they would also take a look at that in that process, I think it'd be helpful for us as we look at it from a policy and a use perspective.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Ralston.
I guess my question is, we we don't have a rate, like, what bus drivers we paid if they drive a bus, or what mileage would be? Because it seems like it would align with that.
We, well, we have, we do have a rate. We, we charge $50 an hour for the use of the bus. That that comes with the with the driver, obviously. Fuel, maintenance of the vehicle, plus the vehicle. So we do have standard rates that we are using. It's simply not in that policy. And I would say we bring this to you because this is probably the only thing that we receive revenue from that's not in the facility group. So it's, it's in its use of a school facility, a bus is a facility. So and that's the reason it's on the report.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Any other questions about the facility use of report? Okay. Um, go ahead, we are, yeah, we already have a motion, right?
Yes, we do. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner. Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, great. Okay, we have 5.04, which is the Personnel Docket as amended.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the Personnel Docket as amended.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Ralston. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
We did get an update regarding one of the items. I wasn't quite sure I understood the, what the update was saying. Can you just, would just kind of explain what, or had Dr. Birdsong could explain what?
What is the update?
We received.
We just got an email.
I think the update was around the removal of the personnel.
I mean, I know what the amendment was, yeah. There was some, an amended amendment. Is that what you're asking about? Or what is the update?
We, there was an, there was an item on the Personnel Report that I'd asked about that Mr. Billups said he was going to go check on and provide us an update.
Oh.
He he sent us an update.
And he did.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, I'm just not quite sure I understand. It's, I just want to know if he can just simplify what what is actually saying. I'm not asking for anybody's position or name to be.
But I haven't even seen it yet.
No, hold, hold. Because this was an item that was discussed in closed session, and it's personnel. So we're voting on the Personnel Docket. I think that if you, respectfully, Mr. Jordan, I think that if you need additional clarity, that it might be something that you have a conversation with Mr. Billups. But because it was done in closed session, I just.
I hear you. If you, hear what I'm saying. I am not asking Mr. Billups to disclose any identifiable information about an individual. Okay? What the, when it came up in closed session, I asked the question because the question was asked of me, would it impact my action now? We received an update. I'm just not quite sure I understand exactly what it's saying in terms of the person, the the position in terms of its role. Yeah, just want, just trying to make sure I understand the position. And so that's what I was asking clarity around.
Whether or not this person is full-time at that particular location?
Yeah, I think that's what it's saying, but I'm trying to get some clarity around.
Is that the yes or no? Is they're full-time at that location?
Uh, it's possible.
Mr. Billups?
Yes.
Are they full-time, is that person full-time?
Yes, it's a full-time position. The person was a teacher at another school. They competitively competed for the position. They were selected for the position. They were placed at that school location in that position.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, great, thank you. All right, up next, we have item 5.04.
Would you like to read the motion?
Madam Chair, regarding the Governance Training RFQ Action, I move that the board award the contract to governance training to the Valdrin Group, LLC pursuant to its response to the request for Quote Number RFQ-22014CR, subject to RFQ's individual provisions and direct the administration. direct the administration, administration proceed to form a contract.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Discussion. Ms. Bassin and then Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. While I think governance training is incredibly important in this situation, while we have met the minimum requirement of three days, I haven't agreed with the process that was used to arrive at this decision. Therefore, I'm not going to be voting to support it.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, first, I just want to disclose that the Council of Great City Schools had a application for individuals that wanted to be involved with some programs they have, training that they have around student outcome focused governance. I applied and was accepted. I just want to mention that. I don't think there's any conflict here, but I just wanted to disclose that. But everything I'm doing with that is coming out of my personal funds. It doesn't involve any, any school funds. Oh, thank you. My, my, I didn't think, I know we received two proposals or two responses. I didn't think either met the task that we, that we put forward. And, and I feel that we're walking a slippery slope here in terms of the, the process as far as giving a vendor an opportunity to present to the Board and then respond to the RFQ and then we recommend selecting that, that entity. So, I just think it raises various issues. And so, it's nothing personal against any vendors or anything. I just think that we, we need to be much more careful with that. And so, I don't think either the applicants met the criteria that we set. And I think we should continue so we can get it done better. But I'll, I'll be voting no for, for those reasons.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'll be voting in support of the contract. I was very impressed with the application that they put together specifically with regards to their scope of work. They are going to build our capacity to develop the five-year Student Outcome Focus Plan for Student Academic Outcomes and Improvement Monitoring, which is top on my list. They're going to give us guidance on the annual superintendent evaluation and other items. And so, I am looking forward to moving ahead with this process. It seems like they're very qualified. They have worked with numerous high-performing school divisions within the state of Virginia, and I believe that they can offer some great leadership and facilitation with the Board and the, the expected outcomes that we want for our students and staff.
Thank you. I do want to disclose, so, I don't want to say here, but at the time when the Valdron, Valdron Group did present, we were operating under, we were operating, we did that because we were operating under the, I don't want to say assumption, but that we were going to amend the contract and that we could move forward with it at that time. And things have changed since, since then. So, it wasn't to try to do anything, you know, out of line. And so, I just want to make sure that I put that out there.
Yeah, and I didn't, I wouldn't, I don't think we were doing anything intentional, but the, the point that you made was the point that I had, is that we thought we could do one thing and made overtures in that regard and gave them an opportunity to present. Then, when we found out in the meeting we couldn't do that, we went through this process and then came right back to them. And it just seemed like it was, I just think it can offer the appearance of us going through a process just to get to where we already were versus truly allowing for a competitive process with clarity around our expectations. But I, I don't, I'm not, I didn't mean to imply, and I'm not implying that anything intentionally was done. I'm just saying, I just think it raises concerns that, for the reasons I stated previously.
I was hoping to get more, more quotes as well. Did you have something to say? Okay. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin?
Nay.
Hampson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. And then we have item 5.06, which is in regards to the mask mandate.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a motion for the Board to consider.
Okay.
I like to move that the School Board, in response to Governor Youngkin's passage, well, the General Assembly's passage and the Governor Youngkin signing of Virginia Code Section 22 dot 1 dash 2 dot 1, that we direct the Superintendent and the School Board Council prepare a resolution for passage on March 2nd, establishing procedures for Norfolk Public Schools to follow the mandate of the new statute so as to make student, trying to read my writing, make student masking on school property optional.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hampson.
Madam Chairs, the, making the motion, could I just make one?
Yeah.
Comment that in, in doing this, I, I think it's, that the Board and the Superintendent are always trying to make sure that we are not passing on excessive burdens to our principals and our staff. And I think that this, this motion, this effort provides an opportunity for the administration in, with the support of the legal counsel, to come back and allow us to take action on March 2nd, always with the safety of students and staff and the public in mind, but also working to balance undue burden on our staff as, has occurred no fault of our own, but in trying to make sure that we are in alignment and compliance with state law.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Ms. Tanner. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
I, you know, for the past two years, we've, we all know what we've been dealing with. And as the Speaker said earlier, Norfolk Public Schools has done a tremendous job with trying to keep our students and our staff safe. And unfortunately, politics versus public health has won this, this particular, in this particular instance, unfortunately putting us, the School Board and the Superintendent and Administration in a position where we have to abandon what has been an important layer in our mitigation plan, which, you know, I think it angers all of us. You know, I have a hard time giving a yes vote, but I do want to show my support, you know, to the Administration in whatever we can do to strengthen other mitigation measures, whatever I can do to help encourage the community to do all the other things to protect themselves and the community, including vaccinations and for adults and for children as they become available and as they become eligible for them. So, with that, I will support it. But I, I just wanted to say that before I give my vote to support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I won't belabor it. I don't disagree with anything that my colleagues have said, only to just reiterate the fact that, you know, we've heard parents here tonight, and I think that a part of that discussion has been that we're really leaning on our parents. We, this whole thing has been politics about parental choice, and we hope that parents will make the best choice in their decision for their safety and the respect of their children and our staff members. So, if you want your child to wear a mask, have them wear a mask. We will continue to, to push the mitigation strategies that Ms. Bassin talked about. But at the end of the day, this Board, I think that whatever disagreements we may have on other items, when it's come down to the safety, well-being of our students, our teachers and our staff members and those who come in our care in our buildings each and every day, we collectively come together to ensure that what needs to be done is done for them. And so, I will be voting, I'm not in support of the Governor and using our children as political pawns. And that's why I diverted this motion to Mr. Jordan Reed, because I want to support it, support him in that respect. But I will vote for this because it's what's in the best interest and what we need to do so that we don't, we need to be focused on the, the teaching and learning that's happening in our buildings and making sure that we make sure that they're safe for everybody that's in our buildings. So, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Okay. Bassin?
Oh, man, this is so hard. I'm like trying to get a.
You're going to start it.
An aye. What's that? I know, I hate being the first person.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, aye.
Okay. Hampson? Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Good job, folks. All right. Let's see, up next, is there, sorry. Okay. Ms. Johnson, you have some comments. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
I have lots of comments. I'm very excited to speak. I love to talk, especially about things.
Do you want to speak from there? Do you want to go up to the lectern?
Sure, I'll go up there.
Okay, wherever you're comfortable.
So, first off, I just want to say hi. It's nice to see you guys again this month. First off, since we just talked about the mandate, many of our students, including myself, have been so appreciative of how you guys have been handling the pandemic and how you guys have been taking it very seriously and putting our health first in terms of wearing masks, making sure we're socially distant as much as possible, and trying to keep our schools clean. So, that's a big help, especially when, you know, a lot of other people around you are saying that that's not what you should be doing, and other cities are taking away the mask mandate, and you guys held up for as long as you could. So, on behalf of all NPS students, we greatly appreciate that. Secondly, I've been really focusing on the mental health of the students. I've noticed within my peers that, you know, my friends who have been gifted since kindergarten are now like struggling in their classes just due to the pandemic and the mental health of it all and the emotional, emotional toll it's taken on all of us, especially on the juniors and seniors who are graduating and preparing to graduate. I've been working with Dr. Dennis Moore, the head of, or the Chair of Student Wellness for NPS, on a mental health app that will basically check in on students' mental health and help them get through their days because, you know, it's 2022, we're all using our phones. So, something that's a little bit more relevant to this generation. So, that's in the works. And I also plan on visiting a plethora of schools throughout the city to talk to the students individually so that I can get a better judgment of like what's going on, how they're feeling, what they're going through on a day-to-day basis, especially because I only attend one school and there's a lot of schools. So, I just kind of wanted to talk to you guys about that and let you know about the plans I had and the things I had going on. So, that was pretty much it. So, thank you for listening to me talk tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
I have a busy schedule now.
I know, right? Right at the end of the school year, too.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to do something. But yeah, do you guys have any questions about anything or any suggestions about anything? I'd love to hear it all.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for passing me the note that you did and asking if you could speak. And I know that, I think I had mentioned before that you and some other young people have been advocating for school boards around the Hampton Roads to also have student reps. And I just didn't know if you wanted to take a moment and talk about that.
Oh, yeah. So, last month, at Virginia Beach's second School Board meeting, I attended, and I spoke on the fact that they should get student representatives. Me and my Portsmouth counterpart, we both spoke on how it's very important that students have a voice and they are made to feel like they have a voice, especially since I became student representative for the city of Norfolk. Many students from the city of Virginia Beach specifically have reached out to me saying that what they think I do is really cool and how they like can do it in their city. But Virginia Beach doesn't have a student representative position on their school board. So, we went there to speak and tell them, you know, it's really important that you guys make the students feel like they have a voice because their voices do matter and their voices are very important. So, that's just kind of some of the work. I've been working with some of the Virginia Beach Public School students on, you know, what they can do, how they can support their school board, how they like are allowed to go and talk and speak on the issues that they feel important. And many of them do go and speak. Like, I know in the Virginia Beach School Board Agenda, they actually have it where students like have a section to talk. So, it's like student specific. And some of the students were talking about a lot of issues that, you know, are really important to them. So, I basically was just telling them, you know, you should get a representative. It matters. They matter. Students matter, so.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say how proud I am of them because I think I shared with you all before, they were at the VSBA Student Workshop, and they got together and they truly have been mobilized. And so, if you get an opportunity to watch some of the surrounding School Board meetings, you can see that, that advocacy. And I like to ask, there's two things we would consider in terms of our policies. One, what Ms. Johnson was just mentioning, in Virginia Beach, when they do citizens' comments to the Board, they have a, they allow students to speak first. So, I would like for us to consider something like that as part of our citizens' comments so that it allows us as a Board to hear from students. And then in our policy that we have around student School Board reps, when, when I brought it forward in the, in the previous Board, a previous Board adopted it, part of it was to make sure that student reps could be engaged in discussions like we were having. And so, I know we've kind of traditionally had this portion where we would allow the student rep to give a report. I like to see us make sure that whoever next year's student rep and alternate are, that our policies support their active engagement and voice in discussions so that we benefit from hearing from that, hearing that student voice when we're, when we're making decisions. So, thank you.
And it's been really great having the input of the surrounding districts. Like, it's from Gloucester to up in Fairfax. Like, we're all, like, we have a big group chat where we talk about things and try and help each other out because we're all just figuring this out, you know, trying to get our feet wet, trying to help our districts and our cities. So, you know, having those connections is really nice and beneficial. So, we've all been kind of working together as a team, trying to get things done around Virginia.
I'd like to point out that she's also a member of the Governor's School. So, hopefully you guys are back in the building.
That part, that part. I did, actually, when I was at the meeting, when I first started speaking, I was speaking on, because they had dropped the mask mandate, I had talked about how it was kind of unsafe for Governor's School because Virginia Beach students do attend school with students from six other districts. And so, I kind of jumped in their faces about that, got a little aggressive. But, you know, I did make it very clear, like it is, it was an unsafe choice and it wasn't considering everybody and the majority. So, that was something else I talked about, just throwing that out there.
Not aggressive, passionate, right?
Passionate. But I'd also just like to reiterate, because we've had past student reps who have very much engaged in conversation. And if it has not been reiterated to you that you are a voice and a representative at this table, and anytime that we are discussing, even though you don't have a vote, you have a say. And so, at any time in any discussion, you can simply raise your hand and say, Madam Chair, and we would love to hear your voice.
Thank you so much. It's really important to hear, like, and I'm grateful to hear you guys say that.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for, for the update, and I look forward to seeing more about the mental health app. I concur with Mr. Jordan. And as you know, I've made the request to really kind of dig into our student School Board rep policy and how we might better utilize their voice, as Mr. Clanton just said, you know, in our meetings, especially like during our work session, when really that's when we kind of get into the meat of the topics and the decisions that we do make at our business meeting. And so, and that includes Ms. Restogey as well, you know, to, to kind of get both of And so, and that includes Ms. Restoghi as well, you know, to, to kind of get both of your voices to the table when we make decisions, so.
You're with us for such a brief time.
Look forward to the next four months.
No, it's so, it's crazy because
It goes by so fast, doesn't it?
It does, and then I'm like.
Especially your senior year.
That part, and I'm like, I want to do so many things. I want to do so many things. I'm like, okay, you have a year. So I'm just like hoping that I can set it up for the person to come after me and then they can set it up. So it's just like this never-ending chain of constant greatness coming in the future.
Okay, all right. That's wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
You guys so much.
Was she one of our students to represent it?
Yes.
Yes, in our alternate.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, that should be Restoghi. Okay, um, cha, cha, cha. All right, that's it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.